Okay, we on. Very good. In front of a large audience, a hush falls over the crowd. No, wait, there's no one there.
Still a hush.
So, welcome. Welcome to the February 18th General City Council meeting. It is six o'clock, and I know you've all been waiting for this magical hour. And we don't have anyone here for the convocation, so let's rise and pledge allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation on the ground, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I guess the Director of the Golden Age, would you like to speak to us? You don't have to, but if you'd like to, you're certainly welcome.
Well, I have to say hello. I'm the new Director of the Golden Age Center.
Go to the microphone.
Yeah, you go to the microphone.
Thank you.
Work your way through the crowd. There you go.
I'm the Director of the Golden Age Center, so this is my first city council meeting, so I'm happy to be here. So, I've been Director since the 26th of November, so almost three months, and I'm just really excited to be here and be a part of this community. Thank you.
Lisa, would you want to tell us what you did before you came here?
I come from the Army. I spent 23 years in the Army, so I'm in the process of retiring. So, it's great to be here. I've been stationed all over the world, so this is nice. This is just kind of a smaller community and a five-minute commute to work every day. I enjoy it very much, so.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else out there like to speak? Okay, well, seeing none and hearing none. Okay. We don't have any comments, so anybody from the City Council have any comments or announcements they'd like to make at this time?
Are we going to do a roll call?
Shall we do a roll call? I'm sorry. I've gotten out of control already. Would you call a roll, please? Thank you, Frank.
Councilmember Cochran, here. Councilmember Gonzalez, absent. Councilmember Hammack?
Here.
Councilmember Hakeses?
Here.
Councilmember Meisner?
Here.
Councilmember Turner, absent. Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Here.
Mayor Troutman?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Are there any comments or announcements from the City Council? Mr. Hammack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Combined Regional Communications Authority has selected a new executive director. That's Trina Everhart, has got loads of experience. She's probably drinking from a fire hose right now, getting her feet on the ground and trying to get her hands around her job. But as soon as she gets settled in a little bit, I think that the agencies are planning on having a meet and greet with her so that we can go in and chat with her a little bit and see what her vision for our combined dispatch center is.
Good. And she's on, she started work and now she's on board now? Or did I hear you say that?
The, I'm not sure if she's reported for her first day of work yet, but she has accepted.
Okay, thank you. And John's our representative, of course, to the Combined Communication Committee. Anyone else?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, just an announcement that our Vision Committee this Wednesday is canceled, but we do have a Stormwater meeting on Thursday. For those who wish to attend that, I think we might be able to wrap things up on Thursday and so we can be able to get the recommendations passed by City Council in our first March meeting and move ahead in our COPs. I also want to do a special thank you to everybody in Canyon City that's been voting at votecanyonsity.com every day with every email address. It's been really fantastic to see our community come together. I was out passing, seeing out flyers and posters, and everybody already knew all about it.
Wow.
So, it's been pretty exciting, not only for our own community, just really coming together for a great cause, but for our neighboring communities as well, really rallied behind Canyon City. And it's been very heartwarming and complimentary to have that support. So, we're grateful for it all and hope that the votes continue to go well through Tuesday.
Yeah, we thank you all out there for doing that. I had gotten either, maybe we all got it, there was a gentleman in Germany that was voting for us. So, it really gets out of my relatives in Pennsylvania after I accosted them for, "They should vote, they should vote." They said, "Oh, we already have." So, it's that quickly. Thank you. Then I have a busy week as your mayor. Tomorrow morning, I'll be at Chamber of Commerce, and then I have a meeting with Abraxas. We're going to have lunch together. And on the 20th, Wednesday, I have our quarterly COG meeting, which I attend, and any one of you can go along if you'd like to, as long as it's not more than two, I suppose. So, that's at 10:00, and that is at Head Start. Is it Head Start out there in Brewster? So, I'll be there. And on the 21st, beside Stormwater, I'm going to meet with the management at the Royal Gorge Bridge, and they're going to tour, we're going to tour around the Royal Gorge Bridge. I want to go see where the Alfred is going to be, see how that's going. I guess it's actually, they're starting to put things in stone, so to speak, up there. So, I'm going to go up there and see that. And I think the 21st, I'm actually going to, oh, no! On the 21st, we're going to meet with the people from Monument. Does anybody remember that? The 22nd, rather. 22nd is Friday.
Where are you meeting?
I thought they were going to come here to City Hall.
I'll have to follow up with Ryan.
You might ask Ryan.
I know nothing about it.
Yeah, Monument's coming down. They heard about our small business revolution and want to find out more about it, and maybe they can jump on board in a future season.
Okay, that'd be great. They just want to come down and see how well we're doing.
I think so.
We have to be careful.
It's pretty nice, huh?
All right. So, busy week, and the next week I have a few things as well, so you're, I'm earning my meager income. Mr. Meisner?
I don't know that this is the appropriate time, but we've got, our city administrator has the information compiled for his, if you want to call it, objectives and performances that council needs to look at and finalize a decision for that. So, maybe an executive session on...
March 4th?
March 4th would be appropriate.
5:00 p.m.
We can get you that information ahead of time so you can look at it.
Okay. So, that'd be at 5:00 here?
Yeah.
If that's a pleasure.
It is.
If the performance isn't any good, at least the dinner will be.
Okay.
That's an assumption.
Okay, moving on, I'd like to ask the city administrator to review the consent agenda items.
Yes, Mayor and Council, 7A would be approval of minutes for special city council meetings on January the 7th, January the 8th, January 14th, January 15th, 2009. 7B would approve proclamation designating February 17th to the 23rd National Engineers' Week.
Yay.
John, thank you. We want to pull 7. In thinking about this and talking to the staff, I think we've come up with even a broader vision that we'd like to share with the council, both individually and then collectively in the next week or two, so.
That 7C?
Yeah, 7C.
Okay.
So, I ask you to pull that. 7D would be awarding bid 17-19 for concrete projects at Centennial Park. This includes flat work, curb and gutter, drain pan, insulation, landscape, and curbing to Brookside Concrete of Canyon City in amount not to exceed $45,000. 7E would award bid number 1819 for asphalt removal and disposal of all existing asphalt in Centennial Park, including the road, to pavement maintenance services, slided in the amount not to exceed $17,000. 7F would approve a purchase order for bacteriological sample testing of city water with the Pueblo Health Department for 2019. We typically send out about 40, 42 samples a month, so they charge us $40 per sample, which is less than their normal cost of 22, so we get a little bit of a volume discount. And that rate would not increase in 2019, so they've been really good to work with. 7G, appropriately, Golden Age Center is here. We want to declare three vehicles as surplus and ready for disposal, and we'd like to designate the 1998 GMC, excuse me, the Ford Windstar with about 88,000 miles on it to the Golden Age Center. If it was here, you could have driven it home. So, that would be included in this particular motion, is to designate one of those vehicles directly to the Golden Age Center. The others, we put out to auction and just be purchased, and when the proceeds are returned to the city's general fund.
Okay. Okay, let's go back to 7C. We're just taking that off?
Yes.
At this time?
Yes. We'll be bringing you back a bigger vision of our idea, probably for March the 4th.
Okay. Any additions, corrections? Mr. Meisner?
My first question is on item F. I realize that that's $20 per sample, and the discount actually comes because we're prepaying it. I didn't understand the discount of volume, but the total, the total seems to exceed our normal bid amount. How does that whole process work?
Well, because they're the closest entity, it would really be more expensive to send it somewhere else. So, we've been working with them for years.
Right, but the whole amount exceeds the $6,500 limit?
True. So, we're just asking you to waive that limit because it wouldn't be cost-effective to put it out because we know for a fact that it will cost more to send it elsewhere. And they've done a good quality job for us for years, so we thank the Pueblo Health Department.
That information should have probably at least been put in the letter?
We'll do that.
That you're requesting a waiver of that bid?
Sure.
Assuming that we've got that authority?
Yes, it's a policy, it's not a law.
Anything else? Mr. Meisner?
I've got a couple of questions that I normally try to do through email, but I didn't get it done. On the bills or items paid, we've got a 2019 Consumer Reports online. Is that a typo?
Let me look at that one.
$3,000?
What does it say again?
Says Consumer Reports Online, $3,300. Seems a little on the high end. I only pay 30 bucks a year for mine.
Yeah, I can check on that for you. I don't know the specifics. I'll pull that and get you the whole council's response by tomorrow.
And then on the Starbucks incentives?
Yes.
We actually cut them a check?
Yes.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
How's that work?
They had prepaid this amount, so that's why we rebated them.
All right, so it's a rebate?
Yeah, yeah.
And then I also noticed that we've got the donation for Employee Council, and that was part of the whole support for the federal employees that was not, that were not receiving their checks.
Yeah.
Right.
And that was for soft drinks, part of a pizza party at the federal prison, or, yeah, federal prison.
We did that in coordination with the State Department Corrections.
Right, I was part of the other side of that.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, yeah. Did you take pizzas out there?
No, they had plenty. They had plenty of staff that did it. I mean, it could probably reiterate, but they were very appreciative of the gesture and the effort.
Yeah, it was a good relationship with the Department of Corrections and all of them, as a matter of fact.
Really, all of Fremont County and surrounding counties stepped up during the government shutdown, and everybody was very sensitive, and it was a really good environment to be in when you're struggling or in a stressful situation like that, to see so many people step up and help.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then I would entertain a motion. However, we're going, and that motion would have to include the removal of 7C. Is there anything else in this motion that we would have to alter?
We would have to note the designation that the 2001 Windstar would not be for auction, it would be a donation to GAC.
Would you like to make that motion now that you've done so well? Thank you, Mr. Meisner.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I move that we approve the agenda and the consent agenda. And the consent agenda, as soon as I find it, would be modified by pulling item 7C. And on item, the item regarding the vehicles that would be surplus property, the 2001 Ford Windstar van would not be sent to auction, but would be a donation to the Golden Age Center. Second.
Okay, main second discussion on that motion?
I just wondered if it might be appropriate for our Golden Age Center Director to explain why she's getting this donation, in case anyone asks.
Yes.
As I stated, I've been at the Golden Age Center for almost three months now, and one of the programs that hadn't been fully expanded to what I believe was necessary for the community was support to the veterans. Many of our veterans have to commute to the VA Medical Centers in Pueblo, Colorado Springs, and Denver. And of course, many of our veterans don't have driver's licenses or don't have family who can drive them there. So, this vehicle will be utilized in support of veterans for medical care at the three VA Medical Centers that are closest to us. So, that's my plan, that was the purpose of the request.
Mr. Meisner?
Are we going to be able to provide ongoing support, maintenance support for that vehicle, Tony?
No.
Why?
Wouldn't be appropriate.
It's no longer ours.
We do other donations for the Golden Age Center?
Not that I'm aware of. I think they would have to put it in their budget for the next go-around. And if they put it in their budget, then we could do it that way.
I know we serviced it before, we intend to donate it, but I don't think it'd be appropriate to maintain it at the public's expense.
And Lisa, you have, you have a mechanic that takes care of your vehicles already, is that right?
Yes, we do. We do.
But just as a suggestion, if you feel that you need to have something for that, when you do your next request to us for assistance, you can add that into it with regard to the rest of the stuff and that.
Thank you.
So, feel free to do it then.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Just thank you for taking care of our veterans.
Thank you.
And thanks to folks, thank you to the folks at GAC who will be doing the volunteer driving as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any discussions on the motion? Second? Hearing done?
I'll second if no one has.
Yeah, Mr. Hammack did second. So, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Hakeses?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Okay, let's go to number eight, potential land donation of land located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Ninth Street and Rain Tree Boulevard. I'd have the city administrator comment on that.
Well, this has a lot of history to it, and I'm going to let Deena share that with you. But it also represents a great opportunity for the city for potentially receiving this and making it available for affordable housing, but she'll provide you the details.
So, the land, again, is at Ninth and Rain Tree. That's at the northwest corner of the intersection of Ninth and Rain Tree, in the northwest portion of our community. The land is, to the east, is actually in the county, across the street from Ninth. To the south is a single-family residential and a little bit of commercial uses. To the west is one of our mobile home parks, MH1. And to the north is both open space and then some commercial development, which is additional storage units that are currently being developed to the north of the site. The site is approximately three acres in size, and the current representative of the ownership group reached out to the city, to a couple of different folks last year. Mr. Guthrie and I ended up speaking in December, I believe it was, and he provided me a little bit more background and sent some information along, and mentioned that a potential donation to the city is one thing that their group is considering. This is not a done deal by any means. The point of the discussion tonight is to let you know a little bit of background of where they're coming from, some of the research, a little bit of research that we've been able to do to date, and then to get direction from council in terms of what you would like staff to do. So, in terms of a little bit more of the background, the land was owned by Mr. Guthrie's father for about 40 years, and at one point, it appears sometime in the early 80s, there were discussions about water taps and waiving water tap fees at the time, and some of that went back and forth at various council meetings from the bit of research that has been completed to date. The, and then the senior, the father, had also gone through a preliminary PUD on the site at that time and received preliminary approval for about 66 townhome units. So, obviously, our PUD regulations, a preliminary, is only good for one year, so that PUD is invalid at this time. And it's still really undetermined whether there is any validity to tap fees being associated with the property or not. So, part of the direction would be, we would, staff, including city attorney, would do a very detailed vetting of that history and have a formal opinion come from the city attorney in terms of, you know, are there any water tap fees or any entitlements associated with that property or not? Then we would come back to council and ask for you to either proceed or not proceed. And the juncture there is, from Mr. Guthrie's standpoint, he feels that there is some sort of entitlement there with water taps, and that therefore would increase the value of the property from an appraisal standpoint, and that's what needs to be considered before an appraisal would be done on the property for a potential land donation. And so, if there isn't any validity to water taps, then we may not even want to move forward with an appraisal on the property. But at this point, one thing that we would consider is to have the city complete that appraisal if we had a little bit more certainty that there might be a donation to move forward with. If things would work out and there would be a donation, staff feels that this property might be a good place for some affordable slash attainable housing for the community. This would be in lines with the history of what was envisioned on the site and in terms of the vision of the long-term landowner. And the owner's representative for the property did convey that that would be in line potentially with their vision in terms of a land donation, but there did seem to be a very clear tie to some assumption of water tap entitlement that exists on the property.
I have a question, if I may.
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry, Ms. Cochran, go ahead.
Are they wanting the appraisal done just for tax write-off purposes, or are they wanting the appraisal to know whether or not they want to donate it?
Well, so, we would need the appraisal, and they would want the appraisal in terms of a land donation. The key is, they're, in their minds, there is some sort of entitlement and water tap value associated with that, and they would want that accommodated or acknowledged as part of a potential land donation in terms of their write-off for the inheritors.
Ms. Hakeses?
When we do and look at all the stuff in there, what we also look at, because you got the storage sheds right there, and find out what the space from the storage shed to the east would be with regards to how much space those storage sheds are going to take up with, you know, to still have the right of way to get into their storage spaces, so...
Yeah, absolutely, and I believe there, I think I said it's a 20-foot easement that currently exists in terms of access, so if and when that would develop, and if the city were to be part of, say, you know, acting as the role of a land developer, if we did receive the land, then we would assure that that was adequate in the future.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Hammack?
So, Deena, the, in our packet on page two, there's a circle with a star in it. That is the boundary of the land transfer, more or less, is that correct?
Correct.
And so, that structure, I believe that's a storage facility that Captain Hakeses was referring to, okay. And so, that doesn't come with the land?
No, that's a separate parcel.
That's a separate parcel, thank you.
Mr. Meisner?
In the appraisal and market analysis that would potentially happen later, is the severe water table issue on that particular property, for the most part, I think the general opinion is you can't build on that lot without extensive pylons.
Right, or post-tension slabs for foundations, yes. So, there is, there is some consideration there. That would be part of the work that I would like to do in terms of next steps, in terms of really getting a sense of what's that added cost per unit to potentially develop residential on that particular piece of property.
Because of the lot, just right next to it, they couldn't even dig a footer.
Yeah.
Mr. Meisner?
The last paragraph on page two, is that suggesting that the city would develop that property on those potential housing units, or that...
So, the, if the land donation went through and the city accepted the land, then the city could act as the land developer, meaning that we could put out in RFP, a request for proposals, for whatever we saw fit on the property. The, you know, Malcolm had indicated to me, again, that the group really wanted to sort of honor their father's wish to have residential on this piece of property, and so that was sort of the, a piece of the tie-in of a potential donation.
But as far as the city would not act as a traditional developer, we would simply serve it up for a developer to acquire it. Our interest would be to donate the land, to hopefully sweeten the incentive for someone to develop it, and especially, you bring up valid issues about the potential cost of development. It may not be developable, but certainly having free land will help someone calculate whether it's viable.
Anyone else?
I have, actually, I knew the original Malcolm and worked with him extensively on it, and it was, one of the things that we came up against at that time years ago was the pump in the pumping station there. It wasn't clear to me whether that would require, have been made larger, or where that water line comes from. And admittedly, that was a long time ago, but it came up again when I had, the 80 acres were around CES, which the city took. Any increase of size would have required a larger, an increase in the size of the pump or the pump station there. And the piers, that really wasn't an obstacle because the, I understand CES is on piers. That whole area would have to been done, they put piers down there, but the post-tension slab probably would work it. When he first started that, that really wasn't a building, at least that we used around here at all. But the only hang-up that we had seemed to me was either the water line or was the pump wasn't big enough to service, and he had contemplated a huge project, which I couldn't believe would fit on there. I really think we're getting rid of, we're dodging a bullet by, if we can take it and get rid of that thing that was trying to be put on there. So, and I believe possibly a coordination with council governments might, for affordable housing, might be looked at well, so.
Yeah, the high school is also looking for opportunities to work with the city for their high school students to build some homes as well, whether it was refurbishing old abandoned homes or maybe starting from scratch, so there's some, lots of potential.
Well, there's also, the city of Florence, as I understand, their home building or group built duplexes that are be rented out to, for the possibility of getting teachers to come to their system as a benefit. I think there's a lot of good things involved there if we end up taking it, I really do. So, anybody else? Okay, let's move on to nine.
We need a sense of counsel or something.
Oh, we need the thumbs up vote, hey?
Move forward with due diligence or not.
Okay, Mr. Meisner. Mr. Hammack? Ms. Smith? Ms. Cochran? Is that, is that a definite maybe, Frank? Okay, it looks like we're all in favor. Thank you, Deena.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Consideration adoption by title only of Resolution Number Five, Series 2019, entitled, "The Resolution Amending the City's Personnel Management Manual, Revising the On-Call Policy, Increasing the Amount Paid for On-Call Wait Time." Could we have a discussion from, with, from Mr.? Could we have a discussion from, with, from Mr. O'Rourke?
Thank you, Mayor. All cities have some kind of standby or on-call system. In our case, we currently have six areas where we have on-call staff. We always have a detective on-call, a victim assistant representative, a canine officer from the police department. And then from water distribution will have one, water treatment will have one, and then streets will have one. What we'd like to do is make the system more fair and equitable. Right now, it's based upon the hourly wages of the specific person that's on-call. But the on-call responsibility is a fundamental duty. Regardless of what you're being paid, you have to respond and it really restricts what you can do, certainly in the evening and certainly over an entire weekend. You basically can't leave your home, can't leave the city. You have to be, be available to get called out. Going forward, we anticipate that because we're going to have another canine, we'll probably not need to have the canine officer on-call because there's probably always going to be one in service. So that will save us money. The victim assistance, the chief is operating on kind of a rotational basis with other agencies. So that will be significantly reduced. So we'll most likely have four people on-call on a regular basis. One from water treatment, one from distribution, one from police. We'll always have a detective on-call and then one from streets. And we're just talking to the staff. They wanted to see whether we could come up with a more equitable system. We arrived at, we looked at other jurisdictions, a flat rate, which is more the norm, $25 for an evening if you're on-call, and $50 because you're, it's over a two-day period if you're on-call the weekends. It would increase the cost as much as $20,000, it's kind of our worst case. But we think the total hours will, right now, we're spending about 1,300 hours with on-call. We think it will drop to 1,000, maybe less. So hopefully, over time, we can squeeze that cost differential down. But we just think it's fair and equitable for all parties that are going to be on-call and have that responsibility, be paid a standard, common amount of money.
Thank you, Tony.
Any questions?
Any questions? Mr. Hammack?
Just, I just want to make sure I understand, Tony. So what, as it is now, they were paid one hour at their regular rate or two hours at their regular rate?
Yes, exactly.
For being on-call?
Yeah.
And what we're doing is we're going away from that to a flat-rate system where they're paid either $25 or...
For the day or $50 for a weekend.
For a weekend?
Yeah.
Okay, so if, if an on-call employee is called out to work, they still receive that flat fee?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and then whatever hours they work, is that whatever appropriate?
Yeah, they might be triggering overtime or additional hours. That's separate. This is a cost of simply tying someone up with the responsibility of they have to be available to respond to the city's needs during the time they're designated on-call.
Understand.
All night long or all weekend long?
Understand.
So that really limits what you can do with your life when you're on-call.
Understand.
We don't, you know, we think $25 is...
I have a further question here, Mr. Administrator.
Yeah.
So, my further question is, so the flat fee is not subject to overtime, holiday pay, or anything like that? It is truly a flat fee?
Exactly.
Okay.
Just for the responsibility of being on-call.
Ms. Harkes?
I'd like to make a comment. When I had the privilege of being with patrol here and all that, they've changed their policy then, but I know what on-call can be. I was on-call for a whole week because there was nobody else around, you know? And it's almost like you felt good just to go out the door and breathe some fresh air with hopefully no one killing. So, yeah, I think that's a pretty equitable thing that we're looking at with regards to that. That, that does, you know, tie whoever that individual is, it does tie them down and that. So I don't have no problem with, you know, what Tony's looking at.
Okay, anyone else? Any other discussion?
I commend the city for making that substantial change.
I didn't see anything about a councilperson being on-call. Is that...
You can always designate, Mayor.
No, 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 that's fine.
Mayor's always on-call.
That's fine, okay.
Yeah, 24/7.
Yes, I know that...
One fourtieth of your rate for a PUD is a flat?
That's, okay, it's a whole $2.
Flat fee, 40 cents, is that what you're saying?
All right, all right, quit picking on me. You're all picking on me here, all right. Having, we discussed that and we'd like to have a motion then in a second. We would like to make the motion. Mr. Meisner?
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, I move that we approve Resolution Five, Series of Net 2019. I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Harkes. Any discussion on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Harkes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Okay, let's go to number 10. It's consideration municipal code update pertaining to livestock in the Royal Gorge Park. This is ordinance number six, Series 2019, for introduction and first reading, first reading by title only, entitled, "An Ordinance for the City of Canyon City, Amending Chapter 9.44 of the Canyon City Municipal Code Concerning Livestock in the Royal Gorge Park." Tony, could we have a discussion? Or should we have our attorney?
Either way. This ordinance would confirm that livestock are not permitted in the park. There's two components to how you deal with livestock. One is, you can certainly say that with signage and with law that says they are not permitted, you are only, though, entitled to damages associated with livestock I'm getting on your property if you fence out. So this doesn't create a claim for damages, but this does create an entitlement for the city to prosecute essentially for trespass.
Ms. Cochran?
Does this still allow for people to trail their horses up there and ride the trails? Or is that...
That's not, I'm glad you raised that issue because we've been talking to FAR. We're actually wanting to bring you a, a policy on that. There have been some requests. Our concern, just like the cattle, is that heavy livestock, whether it's a horse or cattle, really aren't designed for those trails. Those are very narrow trails, subject to a lot of erosion and between their waste that they leave, but the erosion they create, it's really not a preferable course. There are other trails that are designated for horses. In fact, there are some trails that are only designated for horses. We think that's appropriate. But we think the Royal Gorge Trail should be designated for hiking and mountain biking because of their design and fragile nature. But we want to bring you a policy regarding that in the near future. We're working with FAR on that.
Any other comments, questions? Mr. Meisner?
Go, John.
So Cory, this is a question for you on the language. Livestock within, within the Royal Gorge Park, says livestock are prohibited, owners may not transport, and there, there's a whole list of things. And it says, "or grazed into," should that be within? We say livestock within, and should that be grazed within and all those other things?
You know, I would say it's grazed into because, but, but I am not a, I'm not a farmer or rancher, but that's the language we took from, from state law. So I admit it's awkward, but...
They kind of nibble their way into our property, so I think that's what it reflects.
Because kind of, to follow up on my question, it doesn't say anything about riding horses.
Oh, I see.
No, no, right now, this is...
Well, no, livestock are prohibited.
Yeah.
And so, and then included within the definition of livestock is horses, so it includes them. With or without a passenger.
And you're going to come back, you're going to come back then with a policy discussing that?
Yes, we want you to, yeah.
Okay.
To designate certain trails for horsers or not for horses or for mountain biking. So they're designated.
Mr. Meisner?
Does, does this create any complications with any special events that would happen on the park?
Not to our knowledge. I mean, we don't intend to have livestock-related activities or events up there. Most things we're working on are either like mountain biking, for example, and not relative...
A horse-drawn carriage?
No.
Across the bridge?
Not on our trails.
No, I'm talking about across the bridge.
But you'll come up with a policy that could cover that.
No, because it's prohibited right here.
Having a horse-drawn carriage across the Royal Gorge Park Bridge is not grazing.
That's not what it says. It says that livestock means horses. So whether you have a horse that's being ridden on a trail...
Well, it's to roam or graze, but to be hitched up onto it.
The first sentence, the first sentence.
Just that they're prohibited, period.
Another thing, I guess if we invited them, they wouldn't be technically trespassing.
Can we say trails?
Does, well, here's, here's another question for Cory.
Yeah, you could specify that. That's the intent, is not to get on our open, open space and trails. That's our intent.
So does livestock include ridden horses?
Yes.
Yes.
And teams of horses pulling wagons and things like that?
This is a complete prohibition.
Yeah.
And livestock encompasses those types of uses of those animals?
Yes.
The way this is written and the way we were asked to address it, it is a complete prohibition.
Could you add a paragraph in there that says unless expressly allowed by permit?
We could, yeah.
Because I'm, there's going to be a situation where somebody's going to ride something across the bridge or be drawn across the bridge.
By, by whose permission?
Council.
I'd say administrators.
The park administrator?
Well, we don't need that coming to council.
Right, you're right.
Right, Cory? I mean, he normally does that with other permits.
That'd be fun.
If council's good with that.
So there's a window open for opportunity, appropriate opportunities?
So what, what I would suggest it said then would be livestock are prohibited in the Royal Gorge Park, comma, unless specifically authorized by the city administrator or the city administrator's designee.
Agreed. That would work for me.
Okay. You don't throw the mayor in there then, huh? I can't do anything.
The mayor will try to wear his hat on a horse.
That's right, I do have a hat. Any other questions or comments, oh, council? Then I would entertain a motion and a second. Mr. Meisner?
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, I move that we approve ordinance number six, Series of 2019, with the addition of language that was stated by the city attorney that allowed for the administrator to approve livestock. Second?
Okay, main second. Thank you, Ms. Harkes. Any questions on that motion, discussion? Hearing and seeing that, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Harkes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Yeah, thank you. And that, that new reading, that verbiage, you'll come back for the second reading.
That is correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Administrator, do you have any comments to make?
Just one. We just wish Councilmember Hammack good luck with his operation tomorrow and look forward to you being back in the saddle very quickly.
You can no longer say you're all original parts.
That's gonna be true.
Okay, then I would like to adjourn this meeting at this time.